I'd like to call this meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. Please join us.
Pledge of Allegiance. To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic where liberty stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you need to please take your role? Collins. Here. Coyle.
Here.
Iker.
Here.
Lee.
Here.
Patrice.
Here.
Yusuf Abramson.
Here.
Owen.
Here.
Okay. Thank you. It's nice to see a big crowd here, up here and back there. We are going to start our meeting tonight with our favorite part of the meeting, 207's Best for Academic Achievement. We will start with Maine West. All right, move on.
Sure. That's good. I am here tonight to present Michelle Viviora. She is one of those special people who is always open to possibilities. From her first day at Maine West, she saw opportunities ahead of her and knew that she could challenge herself. "Every class you can think of is here," she said, recalling her excitement as a Maine West freshman. "I knew I could take higher level classes, electives, have more opportunities to explore," and that is exactly what she did, achieving excellence in a wide range of classes and diving into extracurriculars with energy and passion. "Growth is important to me," she said, "and for growth, you have to go out of your comfort zone. What if I missed out on knowing people or experiencing something? I wanted to end high school with no regrets, and I have none. I think I made it the best I could be." And that's what Michelle would tell incoming freshmen about how to pursue a terrific high school experience, and more importantly, that's what she has shown them through her example. Apart from her flawless academic record, Michelle has achieved distinction in numerous extracurricular activities as well. varsity tennis and key club, of which she is the president this year, take up a lot of time. She has logged over 1,000 hours of community service in her three years at Maine West so far. She contributes to the Student Voice Committee and is a member of the Principal's Leadership Team, in addition to the National Honor Society and all the other honor societies but one: math, science, English, social science. She loves these because her interest in the subjects themselves intersects with opportunities for service. She was a coach tutor and also tutors at the Displanes Public Library, and after 12 years of Polish school for four hours every Friday, she graduated last year and celebrated with the Polish prom. "Michelle determinedly stayed open to opportunities and made the most of each and every one. I take whatever I can from the opportunities I have to make an impact," she said. Looking ahead, Michelle hopes to study finance, perhaps to become an investment banker or analyst, where she would make a career out of finding and exploring opportunities. I asked her if she had ever held herself back out of fear of judgment, and she attributed that fearlessness to her mother, who always encouraged her and told her never to compare to others. "If you want to do something, do it. Her mom is her biggest cheerleader, her supporter. She's my everything," she told me. Most of Michelle's family is in Poland, but here in Chicago, she is also close to her uncle and her grandparents, whom she used to visit every weekend. This strong supporting foundation allows her to be the adventurer that she is. Michelle may not even realize the impact she has had upon her teachers, who were eager to share with me what it has meant to have her in their classes over the last three years. Rachel Hendrickson said, "Michelle is amazing. She's the most academically driven student I have ever encountered. She's so inquisitive and constantly trying to improve herself and seek excellence. She was always the highest achieving and hardest working student in the room. I really enjoy talking to her when she comes by in the halls. She is well spoken, friendly, and thoughtful, and if I really wanted something done, I would put Michelle in charge." Chip Gray recalled Michelle's presence in his class with gratitude. "Michelle Viviora is a student I will always remember and a student to whom I will be forever grateful. During that most difficult COVID year of 2021, it was difficult to connect with students virtually. Many never turned on their screens and rarely participated in online activities and discussion, but Michelle was the exception. Over the course of her entire sophomore year, she seemed eager to be in class every session. She turned on her camera almost all of the time, and she participated online more than any other student I had that entire year. She is intelligent, thoughtful, hardworking, and enthusiastic. I look forward to seeing her every time our class met. She was the one person I could count on to participate and keep the energy of the class going. She was always friendly and respectful to me and to her peers. I believe we all appreciated her presence and her drive to learn. I would like to say to her, 'Thank you, thank you, thank you.' I don't know what I would have done in sophomore English without her." Miguel Aguirre praised Michelle's drive to try new things. "I had Michelle her freshman year and accelerated Algebra II. She was a great student and always worked hard. She would push herself and would do her best to acquire the knowledge that was needed to excel in the class. I've also coached her in tennis, and she's worked hard at getting better in a sport that she just learned how to play in high school. She played varsity last year and this year with very little experience, which shows how hard she works. I know she is a person who is dedicated and wants to do many things and excel in all of them. She's been a pleasure to have, and being able to see her excel in both settings has been rewarding." Pre-romer highlighted with the best teachers know, which is that students teach us as well. "I met Michelle on Zoom in the summer before the 21-22 school year started. From that moment on Zoom, I knew that Michelle would stand out in the best way in my AP US History class. In my career, I have never met a student with more time management skills, discipline, and work ethic. Her History Day presentation on yellow journalism was one of the best projects I have seen in years. The research, the graphic design, and the connections she made to today's media were far beyond high school scholarship. Michelle made me a better teacher. I can only hope that I helped her along on her learning journey." Brian Getz noted that Michelle's passion for learning led her to enroll in an extra English class in her junior year. "Michelle is mature beyond her years, thinking of others in the present while always preparing for her own future. As an outstanding coach tutor, Michelle volunteered her time to help others in study hall, never missing her appointed time and always keeping account of what she did. Michelle also volunteered outside the school day to help others as a Displanes Public Library tutor. Michelle's organizational skills, responsibility, and desire to make a difference stand out. She balances her volunteer time with her academic excellence, knowing all she does now will not only help others but also help her after high school. Michelle was one of only a few juniors in the mostly senior literature seminar class, which she took as an elective because she loves to read. He went on to assert that the world needs more people like Michelle to make it a better place." And certainly, Maine West would gladly take more students like Michelle, whose impact has so clearly extended well beyond the classroom. But she's one of a kind, and tonight, she's 207's Best for Academic Achievement."
Yeah, just right here. Michelle, can you tell us who's here with you tonight?
My mom.
And can you talk a little bit about your plans for next year?
So, next year, as you mentioned already, I want to study finance, and I'm not quite sure where I'm going to go, because, you know, with the application process, you just never know where you'll get accepted. But I'm hoping that I'll get into a good business program, and yeah, I'm so excited.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. You too. Thank you.
Okay. We will move on to Maine South.
All right. Tonight, Maine South is pleased to announce Andre Blachet as 207's Best for Academic Achievement. Why don't you come up right here. So Andre is busy. He was a three-year member of the cross-country team, member of the track and the tennis teams. He's a member of French Club, French NHS Junior Class Council, and our nationally ranked Constitution Team. His coursework is all AP classes, and when I was talking to him, he said he hasn't earned a B since fifth grade. And when I asked him what the B was in, he said, "I couldn't remember. It was so long ago." Okay. What's interesting about what he wants to do later is he's interested in three areas: medicine, history, or being a pilot. So he's a major player in our internship program. He's trying right now to get into ACL lab subsidiary of Lutheran General Hospital, following up on his internship last year at Ameda Health, where he spent time in family practice, and decided, "You know what? This is cool, but it's just not for me." He also, in the Constitution class, loves obviously talking about history, and when I was asking him, like, "Why history? What about that really moves you?" And he remembers being over at grandpa's house, who has a degree in history, and remembering that one of the things that was always on was Band of Brothers. We definitely bonded on that, because we were like, "Well, Band of Brothers is on, there goes your dick." It's on the History Channel. When I was asking him, I mean, he's got this unbelievable academic record, and he said, "I always just really love the challenge. Even with the heavy coursework in all of the classes that were really challenging and tough and had me doing a lot of stuff outside of school, it just really pushed me every day to do my best." He was always motivated and always is motivated by academic excellence throughout his life, and he remembers specifically this moment in elementary class when he was actually called up to the front because of his test performance. He said, "From then on, he was like, 'I was just hooked. I wanted to always do a good job when I was in school.'" He's held himself to a high standard. So Andre, I'm going to read some quotes from some of your teachers, from Joanna Abend, your English 1 Accelerated and AP English Language and Composition teacher. She's had you twice. "I was lucky enough to teach Andre for two years in English class, and I can confidently state that Andre is truly one of District 207's best students. Andre achieves great academic success, but his vibrant personality and humble attitude highlight his strengths even further. Andre has a quick wit, a kind heart, and a resilient spirit, which he demonstrates. In the spring of 2020, when our English 1 Accelerated class quickly shifted to e-learning, and he didn't miss a beat. He was a leader in our class during that time. I was thrilled to have him in class again as a junior in AP English Language and Composition, where he made his mark as an insightful writer and enthusiastic participant in discussions. I am so proud of what Andre has achieved in his high school career, and I have no doubt that he will be successful in his future endeavors." Andre's AP French teacher, Emily Delahonte, says, "I have Andre in AP French, and he is an excellent student. He always has a good attitude, is kind to others, and actively contributes to discussions and activities in class. He is very dedicated to learning French and even traveled to France with his family this summer. His family is also hosting one of our French students coming to South in October, and I am very happy to have him as a student, as a member of our world language community, and excited to see what he does in the future." Juliana Cucci, his English 2 Accelerated teacher, says, "Andre stood out during a year of online and hybrid learning because he always participated to the fullest in everything he did. Whether it be leading small group discussions, playing a role in a play, or raising his hand in class, I could always count on Andre to be fully engaged in the lesson and in maintaining relationships with his peers. He had a great year in an extremely trying time, and Andre was a huge part of the culture that made it great." And finally, Andre, your teacher Kay Wagner in AP Physics, said, "Andre was a student of the months and also received the AP Physics Year End Award in my class. He demonstrated grit, persistence, and hard work in achieving the highest grade in my class. Andre was also unfailingly polite to me and his classmates, providing a great role model in class. Additionally, he was always ready with a smile and even laughed at my corny physics puns." Good job. That always makes teachers happy. So Andre, congratulations on your career. Can you tell us who is with you tonight and what your plans are for next year?
Tonight, my parents, my grandparents, and some of my cousins and my aunts are here.
All right. Well, that's awesome. What are you thinking about doing next year?
Next year, I'm thinking about maybe biology or history, getting a degree in one of those two.
Awesome. Congratulations. We're excited.
We will move along to Maine East. Dr. Michael.
Maine East High School is pleased to recognize Natalia Barna as one of 207's best in the area of academic achievement. Natalia, do you want to stand up here?
Sure.
Natalia's transition to Maine East highlighted her personal ambition. Her counselor and teachers quickly learned that she was willing to invest whatever it would take to ensure that she had the opportunity to take advantage of every course that would challenge and interest her. Though Natalia began high school mathematics at the most accelerated level for high-achieving ninth-grade students, she felt she could do more. Natalia self-taught the BC calculus concepts and ultimately earned a four on the AP exam. Similarly, Natalia felt she could stretch her skills in English during her 10th grade year, and she was right. While participating in English 2 Accelerated, Natalia concurrently prepared herself for the AP English Language and Composition exam, also earning a five. Thus, she completed AP Lit in 11th grade, earning a five on that exam as well. David Hessler, Natalia's English teacher, shared that Natalia is the most focused and driven student I have ever met. Her brilliance goes beyond test scores. She loves to discuss the ideas encountered in literature. Owen Doak, Natalia's AP US History teacher, was eager to share similar observations. "It was my pleasure to have Natalia in AP US History last year. Natalia proved herself to be a uniquely talented student. Her intellectual skills and abilities, especially with regard to critical thinking and writing, are truly top rate." When asked where her passion lies within her academic endeavors, Natalia was excited to share her love for chemistry. She describes AP Chemistry as her all-time favorite class. It was definitely no surprise to learn that Natalia self-taught the fundamental chemistry skills usually learned in Accelerated Chemistry so that she could take AP Chem in 10th grade. And that's why I saw Natalia's talent. Natalia stood out right away as my AP student. She was a mentor to her peers during the course. Natalia explained difficult concepts to her peers virtually in breakout sessions, but also served as a role model for other students in class by virtue of both her drive to understand and her grit to endure getting it wrong before she got it right. Natalia's ability to analyze lab data and possible errors was superior. While the outstanding academic achievement of Natalia is incredibly impressive, what I loved most about meeting Natalia is that her passion for learning and growth extends beyond the classroom. Natalia is a talented musician and fell in love with orchestra in middle school. Natalia was accepted to participate in the Midwest Philharmonic Orchestra. Maine East is lucky to have Natalia's talent in our own orchestra as recognized by her teacher, Ms. Cassie Ruiz. Ms. Ruiz shared, "I've had a positive experience with Natalia every single day. We are so fortunate to have her in orchestra for so many reasons. She's an incredibly talented violinist and leads the group as Concert Mistress. She leads with grace and humility and genuinely cares about the success of the whole orchestra." Equally notable are Natalia's passions for both science and service. It is clear that Natalia's goals are not just about doing well. She wants to use her skills to create and to help others in the process. Natalia was recently approved to begin a Park Ridge chapter of the nonprofit Clean Up Give Back. Environmental conservation is important to Natalia, and this is another way to give back to her community. It's fair to say that Natalia is highly likely to succeed in this endeavor, as she has in many other opportunities at Maine East. When taking our entrepreneurship course, Natalia's project earned first place out of the 40 teams in district. Her project design regulated the water temperature of faucets. Natalia also engaged in a chemical engineering internship through Maine East that she found to be helpful, but also confirmed for her that her passion is more in the area of chemistry. While Natalia does not know exactly what her future career path may hold, the summation of her experiences indicate that a dream job may be in the area of organic chemistry, where she could work for a pharmaceutical company, and Natalia was very specific to design drug treatment to cure rare disease. While Natalia's GPA is off the charts, and she has earned scores of four or five on 10 AP exams in merely three years of high school, the fact that Natalia has also excelled in the arts, in leadership, and in service is truly amazing. Natalia shared with me that she loves Maine East because it's challenging, tight-knit, and collaborative. She said that she is inspired by the work and ideas of her peers. Without a doubt, students and staff alike are also inspired by Natalia.
Natalia, you want to tell us who you're here with today?
I'm here with my parents.
Your parents, great. And what are your plans going forward for next year specifically?
I hope to get a full degree in economics and chemistry, so that maybe one day I can open my own pharmaceutical lab, and I also hope to get a minor in music to continue my passion in college.
Excellent. Thank you. That's all the good stuff there, aside from the word, the good words. Well, thank you to all of our really talented, gifted students, especially having a career so far that's been not normal. You've achieved a lot. We wish you a very good senior year and future in college or wherever your plans are. This is your opportunity now to go ahead outside into the hall with your principal and your parents and take some photos. You're welcome to come back to the meeting at that time, but you are free to leave the meeting at this time if you'd like. Okay, we're just giving them a chance to move along. I know we have a couple of public comments. If anyone else, in addition to these two, is interested, please fill out a card. Just let us know. We'll start with Julia Hayden, and she, of course, knows the rule, but I'll go ahead and state it. We do ask that you keep your comments to three minutes.
Should we stay here?
You can, wherever you're comfortable, Julia. You might want to, there is a podium here if you want. Yeah. Very high time. Okay, welcome.
Thank you very much. My name is Julia Hayden. I am the president of the 207 Education Association. I'm also, I've been a math teacher at Maine South for 28 years, my whole adult life, and I would like my colleagues on the executive council to also have a chance to introduce themselves.
Hi, I'm Jen Seroschinsky. I am a special education teacher at Maine South. I think this is your 22 or 23. My career's also all been within Maine. I've taught at all three schools, and I am one of the vice presidents of 207 EA.
Hello, Donna Michaels, math teacher at Maine West. I'm also an instructional coach, and this is my 26th year, and I student taught at Maine East. So my entire teaching career has been in district, and I am serving as treasurer for the 207 EA.
I'm Matthew Nix. I'm the orchestra director at Maine South High School. This is my 11th year in education. I've taught in upstate New York and in Michigan. This is my third school district I've worked at. This is my sixth year here. And I'm one of the other vice presidents for 207 EA.
And I'm Colleen Hatch. I'm an English teacher at Maine South. I've been there 22 years, and I am the secretary of the EA 207.
So our purpose tonight, in addition to introducing ourselves, is to tell you how excited we are to begin this school year, to thank you for your support, to thank Dr. Wallace for his kind words at the opening day speech, to thank, I'm sorry, you, Dr. Owens. Everybody's turning.
Not doubting. Well, the problem.
To thank you, thank you, Mrs. Owens, for your, especially your words of support. All of us have seen so many challenges. We continue to see so many challenges. We're not seeing as many masks these days, but we all know that we still have a lot that we need to contend with. But we also know, as we acknowledged on that beginning day, that there are no stronger adults or educators than there are in this district. So I do thank you for everything and continue to look forward to working with you.
Thank you to all of you. Thank you very much for coming here. Thank you. Good to see you all. Okay. I have, sorry if I can't pronounce this right, Gota Barva, I believe.
That's me.
Okay, you can stay there, or you can stand, whatever you'd like. Yes, of course, of course.
Hi, so my name is Gota Barva, and I spoke with Mr. Red, and I forget the last name.
Jackress.
I'm not sure.
Red Card or Park?
My issue is, I would like to know why our kids in District 207 have not provided school buses. With today's, everything that's happening in the world, why our kids are not, 14-year-old kids, some of them, for example, my kid, has to take two buses to go to and from school with 15 or 20-minute walk and waiting for the bus another 20, 25 minutes. Today, he missed the bus. He had to wait, they had to order Uber for him, and he's just, he never took a bus. So he's learning, I get it. But I just, I would like to understand why the kids that actually came from public school from District 62, which provided buses for them all this time, and there are all the kids go to District 207, and they have no buses, no transportation whatsoever. Their first day of school, Maine West, I, I bet you guys, no, there was a lockdown. It was so scary. And after the lockdown, whatever happened, it was not dangerous, I get it, they let everybody go, just on the street, like that. You don't know, as a parent, I only have one child. It's scary. It's scary out there. I do not understand why our kids have not have provided school buses, the 14-year-olds. I would like to understand this, because I called, I talked to a couple people, and they had no answers. What they told me is, it's been like this this whole time. Why? We have no idea why.
Thank you. We don't, we do not respond to questions during our meetings. That's not how we do it. But we hear what you're saying, and, you know, I don't know if someone has followed up, but I'm sure someone can speak with you about this issue.
Oh, okay, that's how it was. I know how it was.
Right, that's okay. No, I understand. I do. It's just that's not, we don't do that. We don't, we don't have a back and forth. We listen to your comments, and then we have your name, and we can follow up.
To me, it's very, you guys are parents too, you have kids, you understand, right? So it's, it's dangerous. We had shooting in Park Ridge a couple days ago, right? At 7:00 in the morning. Those kids are all there taking their buses. You don't know what's happening, standing on the street. It's, it's just scary. For me, it's scary.
I understand, and thank you. Thank you for coming and sharing your concerns.
So you guys have taken into consideration, and I have other parents that actually have the same concern. I'm here today, you couldn't come. So, but I would like to, if someone could reach me, you have my phone number?
We do.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you very much. Are there any other comments or public comments or anything else? Okay. Okay. We're going to move along to an update from the superintendent.
Okay, a few things tonight. First of all, welcome to Ed, welcome to Dean, to their first official, full-blown board meeting. So welcome to the board. I'm glad the EA was here today to introduce themselves as well. One, just a general update for the group here, along with our cabinet team, or most members of our cabinet team, we met last month with the Park Ridge and the Displanes Police Departments to review our threat assessment and our crisis planning, just to update, we go over some protocols. So that is something that we'll try to continue to do moving forward. We have some new reporting requirements, and I think it's just been, it's been a good partnership with the police departments as we work with them. We've got a couple of groups to recognize this evening. I'm going to flip the order of this, so I'm going to start with some superintendent's awards, and I'm going to read this, and Eileen, if I, if I don't get this totally accurate, you can supplement the report. After last August, or this past month's board meeting, just a day or two after that, we had an event that happened at a luncheon at, I believe it's Maine West, and one of the student workers, one of our student workers, began to choke on his meal. And I would like for Manny and Miguel and Kayla to come on forward, because I'm going to, I'm going to talk about the three of you. This is a really cool story. And so one of our student workers began to choke on his meal. Manny Hernandez, longtime district employee, observed this, and without hesitation, performed the Heimlich maneuver on our student, dislodged the initial piece of food, which caused him to begin choking. While he was able to breathe and speak the entire time, the student continued to gag and had difficulty drinking water. During this time, Manny and Miguel, Miguel was here, observed and supported the young man, and Miguel encouraged contact with the athletic trainer for additional support and consultation. Kayla Oras joined in supporting the student and asked him a series of diagnostic questions. As the three staff members continued to talk with the student, discussed different strategies they could employ, the student finally expelled the final piece of food that was causing discomfort. And so that is a story that, you'd be surprised how many times this has happened over the years, but it's always really important to recognize the staff who are there day-to-day and step in in the moment and just do the things that hopefully they've been trained to do and know to do, and we have a really positive outcome on behalf, because of these three staff members with us tonight. So Manny, Kayla, and Miguel, for your efforts, and I know none of you would say that you were heroic, you were just doing what you were needed to do in the moment, but we think you're heroic, and we certainly want to recognize you for helping to have a really positive outcome for one of our students. So thank you on behalf of the Board of Education. And we have some awards for you. I got one. I got him. They're going to show you what they look like.
I'm sure it feels like you were doing your job, but those moments are really important, and obviously to a parent somewhere, that was supremely important. Thank you so much for doing your job well. It's not overlooked. You did it well. Thank you.
Okay. And the next presentation, we actually have the Maine West GSA group here tonight to give us an update on a grant that they got and some activities they've got going on. I am going to try to get this presentation to play. I am going to try to get this presentation to play, hopefully. Okay. We have new screens here. I'm trying to figure out how to get them on.
There you go.
There we go, there we go, there we go. Okay, that we can fix. Been a long time since my art history. Operate rare. It helps if you plug the cord in. In my, go. There we go. Okay. And I've got a file for you. Ready to go. And with that.
We had to eliminate something, so I'm just making, updating a lot. So, hi, thank you so much. I, I did not memorize it because my brain is on overload, so I'm gonna read. But thank you for having us this evening. We are just so happy that we had this event in June and to present this grant. So I'm just gonna read and then I'm gonna introduce two of our GSA and Main West.
Allison, would you introduce yourself as well?
Oh, I'm sorry, yes. I'm Allison Adams. I'm a counselor at Main West High School. And I've been fortunate enough to be the sponsor for the Main West GSA for over 10 years. Our GSA has been a club that promotes inclusion, acceptance, and a safe place for all. The purpose of all of our clubs is a space for student voice to shine. And it's because of our students that we're here today. So in partnership with Speak Displayings, we are proud to present our $10,000 grant that we received from the It Gets Better Project. 50 states, 50 grants. The It Gets Better Project mission is to uplift, empower, and connect lesbian, gay, bisexual, transgender, and queer youth around the globe. I would like to introduce our students to tell you about their vision, to create a community event that led to this grant. So I'm going to let Monish Soni and Aubrey Brown tell you a bit more. And I will.
Hello, everyone. Do you hear my name? I'm Monish. I'm a senior at Main West. As a student and intern with Speak Displayings, our goal was to partner with the high school GSA to create a safe, fun, family-friendly event to celebrate Pride Month and the LGBTQIA+ community. We started planning this event with only three people. But as soon as we presented it to the community, we were overjoyed to see that so many people were ready to help. This event wouldn't have been possible if the whole community didn't come together. I want to thank Dr. McMahon and Ms. Aldwards for everything they did to help us. And Sheila as well, she also was with us the whole time. And Alex, thank you for everything. And, yeah. And we also have a video. So whenever you guys get a chance on your own time, you can look at it.
We'll share.
We'll share with you guys. Thank you.
Hello, I'm Aubrey Brown. This year's event joins together organizations and exhibitors from all over the Chicago area. Community members and leaders, and even the youngest of the Des Plaines community, join in on the fun. The responses from those that attended were of praise and positivity. This grant will allow us to create an even bigger and better event as we, as we look forward to June 3, 2023. So save the date. Thank you to all that participated. And a huge thank you to Speak Displayings, Jesse Mug and Heather Dean specifically, for their support and guidance to make this event come to fruition. Thank you for your time.
Thank you so much. We're gonna share this, because there's some great quotes that we got directly from people that attended. And so we will share this, as well as the video that Monish put together that got us this grant. So thank you so much. And put it on your calendar, June 3, 2023.
Thank you all so much.
I, I mean, I know we've talked about that event. We heard a lot of buzz about the event and how great it was. So it's good to meet the people that were behind it. We've been terrific getting that grant. I mean, were there only 50 grants at that?
Thanks, Manny.
Was it only 50 grants in the country? One per state?
Yeah, and they, and just to add this to it.
Yeah, please.
They actually reached out and were like, um, could you redo your budget? We want to give you more money. We did, and, and they've been fantastic.
That's great. And what's the date again for?
June 3, 2023 at Main West High School. And we'll share this out, so if you want to read more information.
That'd be great.
For those that came, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay. Okay. Okay, we have, you want me to do this? Okay. We have one other. Ashley Kilburg, who was a board member until the last meeting, August 1, because she moved out of district. We wanted to acknowledge and thank her. So we have an official recognition. Ashley couldn't be here tonight. We tried to coordinate so she could possibly come to our October meeting. That's not gonna work, but we're going to have her come. And Dr. Wallace and I will actually present her with this and a little gift that we have to thank her. So I'm just gonna read this for the record. Whereas Ms. Ashley Kilburg was elected to the Board of Education in April 2021. Whereas Ms. Kilburg has served, served as a member of the Policy and Building and Grounds Committees, served as Chair of the Education Committee, and served on the District 207 School-Based Health Center, Illinois Association of School Boards Assembly Delegate, and Community Advisory Council Liaison. Whereas Ms. Kilburg left the Board of Education, now therefore be it resolved that the members of the Board of Education, a Maine Township High School, District 207, express sincere appreciation and gratitude to Ms. Ashley Kilburg and recognize and commend her for her contributions to good school-community relations, her insight and guidance related to instructional efforts to improve student performance, her concern for the welfare of staff, students, and families, and her tireless efforts to promote and recognize student achievement at each of the high schools. And it's signed by each member of the Board of Education. So thank you, Ashley, wherever you are. We're sorry you couldn't be here, but we will reach out to her. You have nothing else? Okay. We're gonna move along. Updates from board members. Thank you very much for coming. Thank you, you're free to leave. Any updates from board members? Yes, Jen?
Thank you. I had a great opportunity to visit Seoul, Korea for about three weeks or so. And able to meet our sister school in South Korea, in Seoul, Taegwang, Taegwang High School. And they still, we met a new principal and also other members of the school. And Dr. Ken Wallace sent a nice school gifts, school T-shirts and so on.
Young child.
Yeah, right. Thank you very much for everyone. It was a nice selection. Maybe take a nice photo of it. And they still talk about their students' visit in 2018. What a wonderful combination that the, the board members and all the principals, the host family members especially, they talk about so deeply and greatly appreciative as such. And they're looking forward to invite us back to South Korea if when possible. And then next year sometime, hopefully, all the COVID situations really coming down, they will be able to send more students to visit our district and learn about our school education systems and our beautiful renovated buildings and schools as well. So the principal shares a great appreciation to all the board members and also principals as such, and looking forward to building a better educational relationship with, with us as well. And I was able to find or had an opportunity to meeting with a couple of other new high schools in rural area countryside, and also maybe one in Seoul that would like to have an opportunity to build another great opportunity when, if it comes to our attention again. So just want to share that information with you all. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, Jen. Anybody else? Okay. I do want to remind board members that the School Board Conference is coming up in November. If you're interested in attending, it's downtown. Please let Ginny know. Is that okay to send them to you? Okay, construction update.
Getting your packet is the August construction update. It's outdated as soon as it hits paper because right now, we're down to punch list with some areas of additional construction being the Main South Pool is still under construction, as well as the Main East Pool. Both of those were scheduled to be under construction. And what was not scheduled to be under construction, what is under construction is the Main East Field House. They are actually pouring concrete this week. So we hope to have East and South wrapped up in November. And then the East Pool will be wrapped up in February. So I'll entertain any questions that anybody has on the construction update.
On Main East, it was not scheduled for now?
So no. So if you recall, Main East, when they, we were supposed to lay the new field house floor over the existing asphalt. When they pulled off the existing floor, the asphalt was in such a shape that it had deteriorated and the new floor would not adhere to it. So then we bid the replacement, concrete, moisture mitigation, and the removal of the existing asphalt, which put us slightly, well, put us a couple months behind. It would have been nice had we known that information before we started the summer. But we worked with the school, moved things around, moved some volleyball games into the, into the ABCD gym and in other locations for competitions. And at the end of the day, the field house will be a much more long-lasting and durable renovation. And the floor will actually stick to the concrete, which is always good.
So overall, are we, will be able to complete as scheduled anyway? Next year, summer?
So, yeah, we're still on schedule to complete all of the renovations by next summer. This summer, and, and I mean, this, I think, has been our toughest summer, not from the amount of square footage that we did, but from material and labor shortages. It's, it was bad. So there were times when we were competing and we had, you know, maybe two laborers when we thought we should have a team of 12. And it was, it was challenging all summer long. So I think both the buildings, Pepper Construction, White, everyone did everything that they could to make sure that we met the schedule we had put out.
I know it's not easy. And despite all the, the cost has been authorized regarding the construction costs and also the labor costs and so on. But I think we are doing a fantastic job. So thank you to Mary and all the members of the White Company and Pepper. The Peppers as well. Thank you.
Pepper looks exhausted. I felt like we needed to give them protein shakes or something.
Yeah. Some of them were going on 45 days straight of working, 10-hour days.
So thank you. Thank you, Mary, as usual. Good update. Okay, moving along to monthly status of finances.
In, in your board packet is your financial statement. It doesn't really show anything. I think the one exception is if you look at expenditures in the Health, Life, Safety Fund, you can see that it's up substantially. We do roofing projects in the summer. That's what's paid out of this fund. We're still within budget. It's just that it's summer now. It's July of this fiscal year. And then we'll have a little bit in the tail end of June to make up that 100% of the budget. But once school starts, we're really not doing roofing projects. Okay? I'll entertain any questions that anybody has on the July financial report.
Any questions? Okay, thank you. Nothing on instructional services, is that correct?
None.
Okay, thank you. Ken, update on FOIA requests?
There were six this month, and they've either been responded to or they're in the process of being responded to.
They went busy. Okay. Item seven, textbook adoption. This is a first reading. Sean?
Yeah, so the textbook, and for the benefit of our new board members, this is a novel. But anytime a book comes forward for which we're gonna have a whole class read, whether it's a novel or what have you, we, we have board approval process for that. So this is, again, we, we continue to try and diversify our offerings for students so that they, they really get different perspectives from authors of color, as well as newer authors coming, who are becoming popular. And with topics that address many of the things that they themselves may witness or go through. And so Sing, Sing Unburied, Sing. You can see, there's a synopsis there for you. We also include the price of the novel. That will be paid for out of our general fund, our general textbook fund. And so feel free to ask me any questions or do whatever research you like on your own. But I always try and include a little synopsis there to kind of give you the general overview.
It's an amazing book.
There you go.
Board, board indoors.
I, I have a question. So the English Department determined that they need to offer more own-voice texts to students. What is that, what does that mean? What?
So own-voice is often referred to from the, it's like the narrative perspective of the individual in the book. So this is a student voice kind of, like, so a kid, the age of a high school student, is the voice of the book.
Thank you. And this also goes through a whole process of a number of people discussing, looking at it, reading it, evaluating it.
I, I might just read them.
There you go. Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Sean. Okay, could I have a motion? This is on the consent agenda. So this is items A, 8A through, sorry, I'm looking here, E.
So, second.
Okay. Okay. I'm going to, sorry, I'm sorry. One second, let me revise that. We're gonna do 8B through E. So could I have a motion on items 8B through E?
So, second.
Ginny, would you take the roll?
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Now I'm gonna, I entertain a motion on item 8A, which is the minutes from regular board meeting, special board meeting, public hearings in August. One second.
We could let them into 1 and 2.
I'm, I'm sorry to be stumbling here, but we have two new board members that wouldn't likely be voting on a meeting they weren't at. So I'm breaking them out for you, okay? So you can abstain on those votes if you'd like. You could vote on them if you want, but generally, if you're not there, you would want to abstain. So I'm gonna entertain a motion on items 8A, 1 and 2.
So, vote.
Second.
Okay. Would you take the roll?
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Abstain.
Patrice?
Abstain.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Abstain.
And Owen?
Aye.
Now I'll entertain a motion on items 8A, 3 and 4.
So, vote. Second.
Okay, you take the roll?
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Abstain.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay. Could I have a motion on item 9? This is the approval of the District 207 budget for 2022, 2023.
So, vote.
Second. Thank you. Mary?
Yes, so in your packet, you have the cover sheet, So in your packet, you have the cover sheet as well as a memo on some of the changes. We continue to have a small surplus in our operating funds, which are our major funds, and that is primarily due to the fact that we have a facility master plan and our capital project spending is down. When you take a look at some of the highlights, corporate personal property replacement taxes up substantially from historical levels and that's because higher than normal corporate profits. So that number is expected to stay higher than it's traditionally been. We put the majority of those funds in the educational fund, however that money could go in any fund that we need. The other area in revenue is we have two new state grants, one to support internships and one for the School Based Health Center. On the expenditure side, salaries, which is about 80% of our budget, salaries and benefits, has been kept to about CPI largely due to retirements and turnover. We budgeted an increase in medical benefits and then we saw an increase in our technology spending for primarily for cybersecurity. So the budget has been on public display since July 1st. We had a public hearing in August to give the community an opportunity to voice any positives, negatives, concerns, suggestions on the budget, plus you. And then the budget is required to be filed with the state by the end of September. So I know it is a long document. We publish it in what I call a narrative version, which gives you a look at what each fund is, what areas in the fund, what happened in those areas, as well as the legal budget, which is just a document that has lots of numbers without any explanation to what the numbers mean, and that is the official document that we file with the state.
Does anybody have any questions? All right. If there aren't any, Ginny, would you take the roll?
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay. Could I have a motion on item 10? This is a resolution adopting the annual board of education travel expense.
So move. Second.
Okay. Mary, would you discuss this just a little bit?
Sure. So with the passage of the Local Government Travel Expense Control Act, a law that tells us to do one set of things because some board members did something that were illegal, we are required to pass the total cap on district level travel. What we do is we take the budget for travel and that's the number. So I think we were about $396,000 in the budget for travel, rounded it to $400,000 and created the maximum we will spend. And the other component of the resolution is a reimbursement cap for board member travel, which we placed at $5,000. We've never come close for an individual conference costing $5,000. I think even the national conference when it's in someplace expensive like California has been about $2,500 per board member. So we pass this resolution and track these funds as we are required to do by law.
Does anybody have any questions?
So, yeah, I do. So $400,000 is budgeted, but on average, what usually?
We don't spend all of it. What I can do is put together a list of what we spent over the last several years.
The last two years.
Probably way less. Oh, yeah.
This is all travel for.
Well, we'll get a little bit more information on that.
That'd be great.
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay. Ginny, would you take the roll?
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 11A? This is the Athletico amended contract.
So move. Second.
Thank you. Okay. Mary, I know you've talked.
So in August, we adopted an amendment that reduced their staffing from four assistant trainers to three because they had trainer leave and no one applied for that vacancy. We have since posted for our own trainer position. So this amendment just reduces the contract value. We have one year remaining with our Athletico contract. We'll be taking the year to analyze what we should be doing. I will tell you universally, there is a shortage of trainers. They changed the requirements from a bachelor's degree to a master's degree and it is, it is a fairly low-paying job for a master's degree. And that's universally, whether you're at the K-12 level, the college level, or in addition, physical therapy places are taking on athletic trainers to do some of the tasks that a physical therapist used to do. So they've, they've not only raised the educational requirements, but they've expanded the market for which an athletic trainer can be in.
Okay. The other thing I noticed on here, and maybe this isn't new, but they do say they're showing a little bit difference in the party who we're contracting with. It changed to an LLC. I just want to make sure that.
Yes.
That's part of the, I just want to make sure someone on our end has, you know, looked over that. Is there a limitation on liability that comes up because of that change from a limited to an LLC? I don't know the answer to that.
No. Our, our certificate of insurance requirements do not change based on that. So, and that's where we get our liability coverage.
Okay. Just wanted to make sure, because that was part of this too. Okay. Anybody else? And good luck finding, you know, I know we're looking for someone.
It's on the agenda to approve tonight, so.
Okay. There aren't any other questions? Could you take the roll, Ginny?
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on item 11B? This is on the furniture joint purchasing cooperative.
So move.
Second.
Mary?
So a joint purchasing cooperative is kind of like a piggyback on somebody else's bid. So under Illinois law, if there is another public entity that has solicited a bid and it meets the criteria that we follow in Illinois, we are allowed to piggyback on that bid and make purchases from that bid. This is primarily how furniture is purchased now. So there are a number of items that Maine South needed that we did not purchase as part of the overall classroom order. So we went out and solicited the vendors. A vendor can have multiple, because there are multiple cooperatives, what we do is pit company against company for that like product. So you can see on certain products, we will receive three different furniture companies providing a bid for Smith Systems. And that way, we not only have the advantage of a bid, we have the advantage of having the best bid out there from the cooperatives. So you have a recommendation to award for different contracts using these joint purchasing agreements.
All good.
And this is for West, not South?
This is for West. I made that mistake. So yes, it's all for West. It was all teacher classroom furniture that was done. We had two tabs on a spreadsheet. I didn't know there was a second tab, so I ordered all the student furniture and this follows up in orders all the teacher furniture. Same products that we've seen at the other schools.
And again, I think this is a fantastic agreement, having a joint purchasing cooperative program with other school to get the best affordable prices that we can get. So I think this is a great job.
Okay. There are no other questions? Would you take the roll on item 11B?
Patrice?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Could I have a motion on items 11C and D?
So move. Second.
Mary?
This is the assignment. So in August, we approved the contracts for earthwork and casted place concrete as well as moisture mitigation for the main east fieldhouse. These motions simply assign those contracts to Pepper. Sometimes we've done them in one motion. We normally do the assignment when we have an accounting adjustment with Pepper, but because this is being paid out of allowance and contingency, there is no accounting adjustment with the Pepper contract because those are already embedded in the contract.
Okay. Any questions?
So you guys discussed this on August 15th, by the way, when we were out there?
We discussed the, yes, not the assignment, but the underlying factors.
Yeah. We awarded the bids on 15th.
On 15th. So that one, this one, I guess I could approve on that one particularly, right?
Yes, yes, you can.
Just to make sure.
Yeah. Because this is the assignment. Okay. There are no other questions? Ginny, would you take the roll on C and D?
Lee?
Yes.
Iker?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
On item 11E, we're going to be moving that to the October meeting, so we will not be voting on that tonight. Could I have a motion on item 11F? This is the construction project change order.
So move. Second.
Okay. Once again.
So the mainline Pepper staff got a little busy this summer and didn't submit their reimbursables on a monthly basis. And as a result, we have a change order that exceeds the superintendent's level of approval, which is $200,000. So tonight we're asking, we're seeking approval of a change order for $270,868, which is the reimbursable expenditures. Most of it is in general cleanup, temporary conditions. It is the change order we see at each school just about every month, but given the volume of work that West did this summer, you'll see a greater level of general cleanup staff.
Understandable.
Yeah.
Any questions on this? Okay. If there aren't any, would you take the roll?
Iker?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay. Could I have a motion on items 12A through D and then we'll, we'll go through, I think these are all Eileen, so you can summarize them.
They're facility.
Yeah. Yes.
So move.
Okay. Would you mind just going through them for the benefit of our new members?
For sure. So we have a great relationship with the Displanes Park District. We've cooperated a lot with them over the last few years especially. And so these are facility fee waivers for them to hold some of their program, which ultimately helps us anyway. So for women's basketball, for boys' basketball, for flag football, and for gymnastics, we're letting them use our stuff.
And I was telling Ed that this is something that we do. One of the reasons also is that, you know, this is a, two taxing bodies here, we're kind of helping each other out. And there's other situations where we'll do this for a university who might be holding classes here. That, that, you know, raises more questions, but if it's benefiting our staff, then there's that connection there. And sometimes we have nonprofits as well. We always try to look for a connection that's benefiting our, our students or our staff in some way. So if you ever have a question on any of those, obviously we bring those here, any kind of waiver comes here. Okay? Any questions on this? Ginny, would you take the roll?
Coyle?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Collins?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Owen?
Aye.
Okay. Item 13 is just calendar items. You know, just take note of September 13th. There's policy and education. September 26th is financing buildings and grounds. You know, we have two new board members, you know, we see, you know, take a look at your calendars. We need to have a quorum, which is two committee members at these, so we'll do our best to, you know, if we have to adapt and change, we'll try to do that, but.
What's the typical timeframe on those meetings? They say nine to 9:15.
Because we run them back to back, so we, we can't start the second meeting until we finish the first. So just in case we wouldn't have a quorum for the first with board members, then we have to wait longer. So we just, it doesn't mean that the first one will be over in that amount of time, but generally the two together are like in.
Possibly at least an hour.
Yeah. Maybe an hour and a half.
An hour and a half.
Together.
Policy and education together is an interesting one. You guys will have to be efficient. Yeah. Those can both be kind of long. So when I say long, you know, an hour. So, but, you know, let's kind of look at those, make sure. I'm not sure what's on the agenda exactly, how many policies are.
I think this is a quicker one.
Okay.
Compared to previous, yeah. It'll go pretty smooth.
Okay. Anything else that anybody wants to add to the calendar? All right. Any other public comments? No? Okay. Just, okay. Could I have a motion to go into closed session for purposes of reviewing closed session minutes and appointment, employment, compensation, discipline, performance, or dismissal of specific employees?
So move.
Okay?
All right. So we got it.
Dean, I think. Did you motion?
Sure.
In a second. Okay.
The new person.
Yusuf Abramson?
Aye.
Patrice?
Aye.
Lee?
Aye.
Iker?
Aye.
Coyle?
Aye.
Collins?